I can go down there Gary, can you run down and ask?
I think we just need to make an announcement to the notices, we don't have any more.
Nothing we can do, as far as I know, or backed.
If you folks can kind of gather in here a little bit, I'm gonna make an announcement, it's gonna be brief.
Come on in over.
I'll try to speak loud enough that... Morning.
Morning.
Hi Matt.
Good to be here, no wonder Matt hasn't been to too many of these meetings. Here, sit right there Matt, don't let me tell you what to do, but...
I'd be glad to.
Want to tell us what to do?
Just the chair.
We met with Mr. Neal this morning in executive session by a phone, no action was taken from that, and we just simply have no news to report today ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Neal had some travel complications in Chicago yesterday. Plain and simple, didn't have time to proceed, get anything accomplished concerning us. So, we have no new news.
When do you foresee that you may have news or will move forward?
Mr. Neal plans to be here, I was gonna say a week from today, next Monday, the 24th. Is that right?
Yep.
Plans to be here in person.
Any update on the micro-sighting and the release of the site plan?
Nothing that we can share.
Why can't we share? Like we never know nothing.
The micro-sighting is of course tied to the term sheet until the two go together, until we get a little further along than that, can we release it? We hope to release the site plan, both documents, soon.
And when, once you release the site plan, will the community be given time to review it?
Yes ma'am.
How long, how long do you anticipate? A couple of weeks, am I...
A week, probably.
Just one week?
I want you guys to know there are a lot of people who want to be here today, every week, but because of jobs and things like farming today, you know, the rain's coming, they're trying to get stuff done. I've had a lot of people send me messages, they want to be here, they just cannot get off work. Is there, would you commit to doing another public meeting or something outside of business hours to discuss the new term sheet and the new site plan so that those people can publicly attend and give their thoughts on the record?
We anticipate having another public meeting, however, we do not anticipate receiving public input.
So what would that meeting look like then?
What would what?
What would the meeting look like? I mean, who would be providing the information?
Mr. Neal, or us.
So, is it safe to say you're not interested in hearing public comments anymore? If you're not willing to put a meeting forth so that people can publicly speak?
We had to open public meetings and probably just are not gonna go there again, at least as of today. One of the questions we have from the public meetings which, let's see, it's been two months ago, what, I guess we wanted to hear from you guys, what was your key takeaways from the public meeting? What did you take out? I mean, you asked for input, you wanted to get input from the public. What do you feel you gained from it, or what did you hear back? Setbacks, and that's what we continue to work on.
For both property lines and homes, or just homes?
Homes and property lines, both.
So, there has been talk that property line setbacks were, talk about 550 feet, which is the same as the term sheet, or similar to 600. Is that still a consideration considering those are under the recommendations of safety with hard hats underneath of a turbine?
It has all still been being considered, that's all we can say.
Do you feel that that amount reflects what you heard at the public meeting in terms of what the majority of the citizens are asking for?
It continues to be a work in progress.
I guess I'm just concerned that you guys are considering subjecting the health, safety, and welfare of people in Omaha County that are not for this or in signed leases, that that can infringe on their property. Is that true, that you're saying you guys are willing to say yes to those setbacks that are under the recommendation?
All of the above are being considered.
So you can't answer yes?
No, I cannot.
I think guys helped me.
Out of the process, I mean, are you guys still, are you doing to try to go the route of just looking at each siding individually? And I guess rather than having a firm number that, from, you know what, the citizens, I mean overwhelmingly, we presented 1350 for property lines and 3,000 from residents, but are you guys looking at going the route of just looking at each siding individually and making that determination? I think the answer to that is absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I guess a follow-up to that, so you say you don't want any further input. When that siding map comes out and somebody is really overly concerned about where that, where that siding may possibly end up, what's the recourse, or how do they, you know, how do they sit down with, because you guys are, you know, you make the final decision, but how do they have that discussion with you guys, what's that final map? And I mean, we're talking about a condensed period of time, just talking a week? You know, how do they, how do we go with that part of the process? How do they contest, you know, this is, this is gonna have an impact on, on our health and safety and property values, and, you know, all the aboves that we're concerned are spoken about at the public meeting. I know you guys, you guys are in a bind, and that's a tough situation, but I guess that's what really we want to know, is how do we, how do we, how do we visit with you about that? I would say probably continued emails.
Yeah, probably, phone calls and emails.
And we're getting right to the specifics, and, I mean, what, what, will it do any good to send an email? I mean, or, or you guys, when you, I don't want to hear that, you know, when you see that, this is it, you know? Is there any final recourse?
Well, we got the input of the public, and we know what we want, they want, and that's when we went to the micro-sighting, we're gonna try and evaluate each individual situation. And if there's a windmill gonna be placed close to some non-participating, whether it's the property line or the, or the windmill, there's gonna be contact. But otherwise, we're, we're pretty well holding as much as we can. But, you know, there's, there's different situations and things that are involved too, but as much as we can, we're going through each individual. And right now, I'm, and we don't know how many people are involved, not too many, eight or 10?
Now, are you talking specifically residences Dennis, or are you talking?
Kind of both.
So, can you elaborate, you said there will be contact, you said there will be contact if people are impacting our... Are you talking within the 1350 and the 3,000? Will you have contact?
We're working on that.
Can you elaborate on what, I mean, will you directly contact those people, or what should they expect? I think the answer to that is yes. We as well as NextEra.
We're not gonna take NextEra's word for it that they came and talked to you, put it that way.
So within how many feet of a property line would, would someone get some call?
Well, the company is the height of the turbine plus 100 feet, I think is what it is.
Okay, but that's not what the public said at the meeting.
And I, and I spent this last weekend, I was over in Missouri, and I went to farm and visited with different people, and, of course, I never got any negative from anybody that's living near them or anything, really. They said, "Well, once they're in, they're really not a big problem." But I understand where you're at, and I understand all that, but at the same time, you know, the setbacks at the property line is gonna be the big issue, as far as I'm concerned. I think we've pretty well got the residents pretty well nailed down, or helped, don't you think Tim, Gary? You know, but we're working on the property line.
In Missouri, when you went there, what was the property line, what were the dimensions?
They didn't seem to know that the people, but it wasn't, it wasn't terrible, it wasn't a half mile, I can tell you that.
How tall are their turbines?
I think they was right at 400 feet.
I talked to Ron Hurst, the commissioner from Reno County that voted no. I, this morning, he actually called me back this morning, and I asked him what his deciding vote was, what made him decide to vote no, and he said, "Number one, he used the commissioner over the area where the turbines would end up," and he said the majority of the people there were drastically, if it would've went to a public vote, he said it wouldn't have passed, number one. He wanted to know what property line setbacks, we were thinking, we were, we would be, and I told him possibly 550 feet, he said, "That's nowhere near sufficient." He said, "That's not acceptable." He said, "You will have ice throw, it's where you guys are, it's not you might." He said, "You will have ice throw further than that, it's not safe next to highways and roadways." He said, you know, basically, he knew it was not the right thing for their county, they're too populated, and that, he just said, you know, he couldn't do that to his county. He couldn't do that to the people in his county.
That's his feelings, I've been, I've been in contact with Ron.
We plan to review the site plan with everybody, if you will. Now, what happens at that time, not completely sure, but we will review and look at individual cases, share those with everyone.
Are you actually going to go to where they say they're going to be a turbine and check to make sure that it's back how it should be from the line and from the house?
I think once they, we approve a site plan, which has been micro-sighted, that those, the company is pretty much bound by that. If you say you're gonna put it here, then that's where it goes. Now, am I gonna be out there and make sure they're pouring concrete there? No, probably not.
What's the definition of micro-sighting Gary? I mean, the absolute definition of micro-sighting, what explains?
Well, I think it's within 10 feet, supposedly.
They kind of put a general area of where they're gonna put a turbine, and then they micro-sighted it with the scope, and they say, "Here's the house, here's this, and how many feet it is."
Have you talked about how much damage is gonna get paid, they're gonna have to check back right away, or we're gonna have to go through hoops to collect.
For what are you referring to?
Damages, you know, damages to somebody's property that's a non-participant, or...
Like what damages Frank?
Well, you know, if you're gonna widen roads out, get the machinery down, it might take some ice out.
That...
Yet to be determined, I think.
That'll be in a road agreement, but, but, that's part of it, you know, decommissioning and all of that. That's part of the term sheet.
They're not gonna make any corners with their big...
All that will be addressed in the road use agreement.
So can they take out my corner posts or what after if they do widen roads?
Should not without, or, without a road agreement.
Not without talking to you.
If you're a non-participant.
And I have heard where that situation has taken place, Frank, so...
What happens?
What?
And then what happens?
No, I mean, I've just heard that there is situations where Pratt County, for instance, where they just kind of ignored, but Pratt County did not have a road agree.
How far down the road are you on the road agreement? What have you...
Well, we're in the process, you know, the main thing is, we gotta get the first part done, and then we'll go working on the rest.
I'm assuming decommissioning is still in negotiations, but to me, for the future generation, to not have to deal with this, we need to have a very strong decommissioning set aside.
Still in negotiations for.
So you talked at the public meeting about having an engineering firm, or maybe right after the public meeting about an engineering firm auditing those numbers for the decommissioning, has that happened yet?
An engineering firm auditing decommissioning?
Or helping come up with the amount for decommissioning? Right now, we're just using NextEra's number, which is unacceptable, you know? How are you going to determine that, and how, what are you gonna provide to the public so that we can be comfortable that the amount is okay?
The number that's currently in the term sheet today was negotiated by both parties.
Can you disclose what that is?
Well, I think it's in there, no wonder it's late.
Well, they're adjusting in, they're adjusting in.
It's not being adjusted?
That's being adjusted, I think, but, and the engineering firm, I think you're talking about is probably more for the road, to tell them what roads we're using, how we're gonna do that, you know, and get that part of it taken care of, they're gonna take road samples, or, so that our roads will be in as good a condition or better.
So are we gonna use any kind of facts or science to base the decommissioning amount off of? Or are we just going to come to an agreement out of thin air that may or may not be enough to cover it?
Everything to date has been negotiated in good faith by both parties. We anticipate that for the balance of the negotiations.
I'm not sure how you get to a starting point if you don't have facts and data to show how this amount is coming together. This doesn't give me any comfort on, on the fact that there's gonna be enough there to take these down. My kids and grandkids are gonna be looking at these, or they're gonna be paying out of taxpayer money to take them down someday. That is not fair for them.
So, what do you think the average age of the people supporting this is?
Who's that?
What do you think the average age of the people supporting this is, this project? Because I'm 17 years old, and I'm getting decisions made for me that will affect the rest of my life, and I have no input.
And where do you want to live when you grow up?
Yeah, I mean, I have a dream to move back to Corning, raise a family. Well, where I want to live, there's gonna be a 700 or 600 foot wind turbine. I mean, it's gonna depreciate the value of the property there. I mean, there's all sorts of health issues with ice throw, and, you know, the headaches, the shadow effect, the flicker effect, I mean, these decisions are being made by people, I mean, they're not being made, I mean, they need to be made for the future of our county, the kids who are gonna come back and live here, and we have no input. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, think of the future of the county, not, I mean, I know the present is important, but there's, like she said, kids, grandkids, that affects them more than the people it affects now.
I mean, your classmates want to move back here.
Yeah, I mean, there's numerous of my friends, classmates, kids from other schools.
You're gonna make him pay to take those things down. That's not right.
I mean...
I want to know how are we supposed to handle when they want to put up an 800-foot tower with the setbacks we have, or only a 600-foot? What's gonna stop them from putting up that, or a 1,000-foot?
I think that's been, being addressed in the term sheet.
If you allow wind turbines to be placed 550, 600 feet from roads and non-participating residents, property lines and stuff, with 3,800 light failures, admittedly, by the wind industry every year, and that doesn't even account for ice throwing stuff, there will be people or animals who are affected by this, people who get hurt, maybe accidents, livestock who's hit in the head with giant ice chunks and killed and stuff. Who's gonna be responsible for these things? You know, somebody's driving down the road, and a turbine's there, and it's in the wintertime, whether you're in your tractor or your car, and you have a big hump of ice come flying through your windshield, get in a wreck or killed, who's gonna be responsible? If you go out and you know you have a whole herd of cattle, and you have several of them laying there dead because you've had an ice storm, or the turbines can have ice on the blades up in the air when we don't even have ice down here, and throw it off. If you're not given safe setbacks to where these things won't affect us, and you go out and you've got dead cattle, or somebody's in a wreck, or somebody's injured, or whatever, who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible for these things? Who's gonna pay for it?
Is NextEra gonna, I mean, is, are they, is that something that they're gonna have? Is there gonna be a fund set aside for damages, lawsuits, all of that? When, when, I mean, is there gonna be money set aside from NextEra? Besides the pilot money, besides, that will cover these damages for the next 30 years?
All things are still in consideration.
Is it safe to assume that this is going to go through, no matter what?
I think if Mr. Neal was here once in a while to hear our concerns, because those things could be complaining to him.
He wanted to be here today, once again, he had travel problems in Chicago yesterday. He planned to be here.
I asked Mr. the Reno County Hurst, you know, what, you know, what he feels like is gonna be, you know, what's gonna happen, and he said, "It doesn't matter." He goes, "I had to vote with the way, you know, it needed, and what, what happens after the fact, you know, that's, you know, I still had to do what the majority of the people in our county want." I had to vote with and do what was right for the majority, and for the future of our county.
But I don't think the question was answered. Is it too late? Is it safe to say that these are gonna go through? I don't think that was answered.
I'd like an answer to that.
We're the people that want these things, week after week after week, it's everybody that doesn't want them, concerned about safety, that your public meeting's overwhelming, and you guys know as well as anyone else, your texts, your emails, all that, there are people against it, where are the people that want it? Where are they? Where are they, other than a few old guys that would be dead in the next 10 years?
They were here the other day when there wasn't a meeting supposed to be called for wind turbines. I walked into courthouse, and specifically the week before, it was claimed there would be no discussion on windmill turbines. I walked in the following week when there was not supposed to be a discussion in Louisville, there was a handful of people out here that were in favor of the wind turbines.
Well, there's only, there could be a handful, but I mean, overwhelming.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, there was not supposed to be wind turbine discussion that week, and there was.
Mr. Neal was here and spoke because it was in the minutes too.
In answer to your, I'll try to answer that, Percy. We commissioners are trying to do the best job we can do, and that's really all we can say until we approve a term sheet.
But if there's a chance that this is not going to go through, you wouldn't be approving the term sheet? I guess is my question.
Does there have to be a unanimous vote of you three on this going forward?
As far as I know today.
There will be a unanimous vote?
Well, no, I don't know about that, it has to be a simple majority.
Simple majority.
Why can't it be a public vote?
Where do you draw the line?
How can...
I mean, do we, do we, do we draw the line for, if we want to put a new bridge in out here, do we have a, do we have a, call a special vote to put a new bridge in?
This is totally different, this is totally different.
I don't know, I mean...
Writing the question is the problem with a vote, and I know, I'll just be honest with you. How do you write the question without taking the basic property right, a landowner, he or she's holding the deed to land, of earning an income from that property? There's no way you can write that question, that I know of. It's never been voted on in the state of Kansas, to my knowledge. Furthermore, to vote, any wind company who comes to town is improving roads, providing jobs, and paying taxes.
Providing jobs for who? Like, nobody around here?
Turbines, so in the eyes of the law...
Compared to Haver Camp Construction.
Right.
And cooking company, and...
Kind of brothers.
Brothers.
Like, I moved back here because this is where I want to live. I don't want to be here if these things go up. I will move. How many other people like me are gonna leave because of these damn things going up? 130.
How many people in this county voting against wind turbines do you have to have to realize that the public is in the majority? Do either have a setback that makes sense, or have them out of the county altogether? How many people in this county have to be for putting some setbacks in place that make sense? You already have 1,373, 74, because I gave you one this morning Gary. How many people have to be in the majority for your constituents to be, their wishes be honored? 1,350 feet, and that's too close in my opinion, but that's what I'm talking about right now. You got a term sheet that asks for, that says less than that. If we want us all to go out and get everybody in here, there'll be a lot of people. If you get to the point where we have a flashpoint, I don't know, you want a riot going on, or what? Because the majority wants safe setbacks, period. Renewable energy is fine, but, and people with their own property rights are fine to make money with it. But I don't want to go in my backyard and have one over towering me and having the safety issues of that. I'm not in the footprint, but this whole county is in jeopardy as far as I'm concerned. Even though we're talking about advocating a committee to study this, if this footprint moves forward and we still have 500 feet, I think we're all screwed.
If there's such a good company to deal with and a good neighbor, why can't we go with those longer setbacks and let them deal with it? What is the problem with that?
And if you don't go with the longer setbacks, aren't you taking away our property rights? We have a right to be safe on our own property too. We have a right to be able to go out and check our cattle and farm our ground, or fish in our pond.
Or build a house there someday.
Without being in jeopardy and being hurt.
The Jeffrey Towers are 600 feet tall, and we can see them from outside of Corning. And they're, how far from Corning? You can see them from Frankfurt. I mean, there, there's only three of them, there's gonna be 120 to 130 of these, red flashing lights.
And they're stationary.
Yes, red flashing lights all the way around us at night. We will not be able to look in any direction and not see red flashing lights. And 120 and 30 and 40 of them in a shot.
So why, why is it that we can't go with those longer setbacks and have NextEra negotiate with those people?
We're working side by side with NextEra to get the best setbacks we can get.
Well, it's gone, it sounds like it's gone backwards since the public was given the term sheet, which doesn't make me very confident in how negotiations are going.
That's, you know, and I think, you guys, again, you asked for the public input, and several of us talked to you after those, and I think you all were really amazed by how the public showed up.
the public showed up. The figures are 80, it's actually 81% of the people that spoke at the public meeting given, given the opportunity to speak, spoke either in total opposition of wind turbines or the safe setbacks, which was 1,350 and 3,000. And I think a lot of you guys following, you know, said, you know, we need to really look into that, and even to the point saying they may have to back down on the number of turbines so they can work with that number. But now we're hearing, you know, originally, they were talking 120. The number's up to now 130, it's even gone up. The thing that concerns me is what I hear in speaking to a couple of the commissioners is that Nextera said, we just can't work with those numbers. So why is Nextera getting special preference over the citizens that have overwhelmingly, guys have voiced their concerns? You know, Nextera, and that's, I don't buy that, that they can't work with that. They're going to have to work harder. They're going to have to go to some other people, offer more money for lease, do things different. If that is not a true statement, that they cannot work with that term. That is not true. And I, I don't want to say this, but I think you guys are selling us out by going with what they're saying versus listening to what the public is saying. Isn't, I mean, isn't that overwhelming what you heard at the public meetings? Jim, is that what you heard us talking about?
Have you been in our executive sessions? You don't have a clue what we're talking about.
Well, that's...
Well, we don't.
You don't have a clue.
So here, I know...
You know, we've been hearing the setbacks. You don't even know what the setbacks are going to be, do you?
There's a lot of speculation.
Okay, there you go, speculation. Hearsay. You don't know. Until you do, then you've got something to talk about. Next week, you'll probably have something. Next week, you'll probably have something to talk about. Today, we don't. We've went long enough here, we've heard your concerns, and in my opinion, it's time to move on. We've got a lot of things to get done with the county besides this, and we're listening. Don't think we're not. End of my statement.
Well, I understood you guys were talking about presenting the site map and the term sheet at the same time, delaying it by a week or two with no public comments, and then it'd be time to vote? Is that the way you proceed, proceeding?
Probably.
And how does the road and bridge agreement and decommission, these other agreements, how do they play into that timeline? Do they all get, does all this get voted on at the same time? Do you see every agreement laid out in its entirety, and that's what you vote on? Or do you take the site map and term sheet, vote on that piece, and then figure the rest out later? How does that work?
I have a question.
You know, I would like to get an answer.
We will vote on the term sheet and the site map, and I think then, at that point in time, once the site map is approved, then a...
If it is.
Yes, a road, a designated haul route can then be established. I'm looking at Mr. Anderson, and he's dotting his head, yes. We cannot approve a road use agreement until a site plan has been approved.
So does that term sheet have contingencies so that if that...
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. There will be no contingencies. I'm not an attorney, but I don't think so.
Well, that doesn't make any sense. What if they ask for something unreasonable in your road use agreement, and then you don't have any recourse to go back and say, nope, never mind, this deal's off?
Then we don't approve the road use agreement.
And then they don't go in.
Right.
What about decommissioning? How does that, that's a separate agreement?
That's, that's in the term sheet. Yeah, that has nothing to do with the road use agreement.
Well, there's a number in the term sheet, but there's really no other language in there.
But there is a separate, I mean, what I've seen from other counties is there is a separate decommissioning agreement.
It says so in the conditional use permit, that there's a separate decommissioning agreement. And there, you don't have any recourse besides the road use agreement. So that has to be agreed at the same time.
You're asking me a legal question, and I'm not going to answer it, because I don't know. And I'm just going to say this, ladies and gentlemen, we are still in negotiations with Nextera based on input that we heard from our public meetings. We're going to meet with, with Mr. Neal next week in person. We hope to have some, something more concrete, if you will, at that time. And I heard, one more, and we're going to take question there, and then I'm going to, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Put out the term sheet and the site map?
Pardon me?
When you put out the term sheet and the site map, or the site map, where they're going to be, is there going to be any gap in there before you guys vote on it that you will take concerns?
Approximately a week.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
One more question back there, ma'am.
Thanks, guys.
I want to know, have you guys driven any other or all of the roads that they're talking about, that they're going to put these turbines in? And seen the bridges, seen how narrow the roads are, all the stuff that would have to be removed to get around a corner? And like, he's asked, who's going to take care of the fencing? Who's going to take care of the dozing? And what are they going to do with all the stuff that they remove? Are they just going to pile it up in a pile and let the landowner have to get rid of it? Or are they going to get rid of it?
I'll answer your first question first, if I may. No, I have not been down there and driven all the roads. I have not been down in that neighborhood, but no, I've not driven all those roads. The second part of your question, then, all this, once the site map is approved, then a road, a designated haul route will be established, at which time, all landowners will be, I think, will be contacted. Here's what we need to do. We need a new bridge here, we need to widen this road, we need to widen that intersection. We will approve that pending that road agreement, the haul, specific haul route.
And Nextera will pay for all that?
Yes. Yes.
Just once, or will they keep, you know, when stuff settles?
They typically leave the roads in better, in equal to or better shape than they started. That will be...
Them haul routes, them haul routes and the routes they're using, they are to take care of.
Continue, like, for years and years, not just, okay, we put it back to how they were and we're gone?
They can't get from point A to point B, or they're going to be allowed just to push a creek, pose and just cross it with their heavy equipment? We wouldn't be able to do that, or are they going to be allowed to do that?
Oh, I, no, I can't imagine that. If they have up a creek...
There's lots of birds down there.
Then we will not sign that road use agreement.
There's a lot of bridges that are not capable of heavy equipment.
Well, until that's established, we can't, we can't address that.
And the one thing that I got to say, and, and, you know, we all failed 15, 20 years ago by not protecting our county, pure and simple, okay? That's, that's where we failed, and I say every one of us failed. None of us can say that we didn't. Because we all... You're talking about the 2012 deal, or what? No, even before that. You know, anytime. We should have, you've got to have the foresight to protect your county and do what you want to do now.
The first, excuse me, Dennis.
Where, but that's, that's our biggest issue, you know. You, to legally protect your county, you need legal paperwork in, and you can see from all the counties that's having issues, even that thought they was protected. So it's all in how you interpret zoning or resolutions or whatever. You know, it's, it's, it's an issue.
The day the moratorium was passed, it was talked about this as being possibly added later. Is that still a consideration?
Excuse me?
The day the moratorium passed for the rest of the county, it was mentioned at least twice in that meeting that there is a possibility that this project could possibly be added to the moratorium at a later date.
But at this time, which...
We all think so.
...that liquor kept referring to.
It won't affect Nextera.
It could.
For the next, for the next project.
You shoot the project down.
The moratorium excluded Nextera.
I know, but at this time, though, and that was reinforced over and over again during that meeting, that that at this time language was put in there.
Asking me a legal question that I'm not going to answer. But back to Dennis, I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. The first wind farm in Kansas was established in 2001, and that was prior to that, Governor Bill Graves exempted wind turbines in Kansas for their lifetime. And I agree with Commissioner Henry in that we probably all should have been in there and saying, here, here's what's going to happen, guys, it's probably going to happen. A lifetime tax exemption, that was worth millions of dollars to the, we don't have to pay property taxes on these. We, like Dennis says, we all should have been in there establishing strict zoning laws. Preventing them or allowing them, whichever we might have done. But it wasn't.
It's too late.
So here we are today.
So it's too late?
So the conditional use permit, from what I understand, was originally a much smaller area. And if that's our only legal bounding documents of ours, can that be pushed back to only that area?
That, I think, is another legal question.
Why, why is that never really addressed? I think we've asked it several times, and it just seems like it never goes anywhere. And that would be such an easy way to get a lot of the people kind of off your backs. I just don't understand why, why that's not taken further, I guess.
I'll go back to the site plan that we haven't approved yet. We're still in negotiations for.
How many permanent jobs do you foresee?
I don't know that. I don't know that.
More than 10?
I don't know that. I'm not going to speculate on that.
Dennis, you mentioned that wind farm in Missouri. How long ago was that put up? The people were okay with it for a while?
10 years.
Wouldn't it stand to think, I mean, you think of like, you know, when you get one of those owls that you hang up in your barn, you know, most of the birds fly off. You don't, you can't really ask the ones that are still there, you know, what do you think of this? They must not care, so it's... The thing I asked is, I said, number one, I said, I said, are you still getting kids out of your cows? Are you still having, you have a problem with your animals? Are your goats having problems? Are the deer still there? Do you have any problem? And he said, we've got more squirrels, we've got more deer than we ever had. You know, I mean, it's just, but that's just a small area. I happened to be to a wedding, and I knew it was there, so I asked several people at the wedding and got some conversation, but...
How many turbines were in that project?
You know, I didn't count them. I never asked, but there's a few.
Are you talking about the project by Stewartsville, Missouri?
No. Conception Junction. Conception.
And I know the ones by Stewartsville, there's a lot of unhappy people there with them.
And, and there's a lot of people over there that are very positive about it, too.
I'm sure it depends, every situation would be different, I'm sure.
I understand. I understand.
We anticipate Mr. Neal to be here, I keep wanting to say a week from today, next Monday, the 24th. I'm sure he will probably, at that time, field a few questions, especially concerning legal issues, which most of these are. I think at this time, however...
Planning 10 a.m. again next week?
Yes. Probably anticipate an hour...
Anticipate 10, but I'd say possibly 10:30, but I'd say 10.
No, no earlier than 10.
Tendatively 10. No, we'll say no earlier than 10. Having said that, I think this ends wind discussion in this office today.
I will say one more thing that, that I've received five or six phone calls this week threatening me that I will never be reelected again, and I want you to know right now, I don't know if I'd ever run again. And I hope that one of you have got the gumption that's ready to step up to the plate when it comes time, because when I came in here, there was not. And Mark and I and another gentleman, Tom, decided, well, let's, let's run for it and see. But I want to tell you, don't threaten us, people. I mean, if that's...
It ain't going to be any good.
You know, I mean, I, I understand your problems, and I understand your issues, and I understand feelings.
Frustration.
I was the last class that graduated from Corning High School. So don't tell me what it's like to have something taken away from you. You know, but that being said...
We understand, but that means it has to continue, that means we need to protect what we do have, because we do have, we have a paradise here.
We don't want the other side threatening us, Harry, either.
We're, we're, we are doing the best job that we can possibly do, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
That's all we can say. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your continued input. Thank you for coming in.